All right, we're all here. Sorry that we were both running a little late today.
Yeah, 66 in a rainstorm.
Gotcha. Yep, I was just saying, I had to go home and change clothes because I literally was soaking wet despite having a rain jacket and an umbrella.
It was pouring.
It was crazy. But anyway, so we'll go ahead and get started. Call order, and our first thing is the Leslie Foxhouser Elementary School renovation funding.
We'll just give you guys some updates. You probably have enough of these sheets already.
You've got to throw the old ones away so I've got the latest.
Make sure you write your notes from the old ones on the new ones.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just put the date up.
That is a note that we need. We need to put dates on all of this.
I do. I put dates on it. That's the only way I know how, whether I'm looking at an age document.
So really, the only, yeah, we went back to look at value engineering, and so some figures that we do have from value engineering that are solid right now. We did figure out that we could get $245,800 out of cafeteria funds.
Okay.
So there's $245,800. Out of, we sat down with the contractor, oh, about two weeks ago, and just went through the construction documents, identify what we could pull out or what we could identify. And so they made a list that day and was going to go back to the contractors to get hard numbers on what they felt that we could save for value engineering of those things that we identified. And so currently, out of that list that they identified, there's an extra $217,700. So you add the 245,800, the 217,700. Now, we're still waiting on about four or five other contractors to get back on some things, and we estimate that to be around $128,000, but of course, we don't know until they give us their numbers. So you can see right now, you know, we're just over 260,000, or sorry, yeah, 460,000 when it comes to our value engineering right now, with about four or five other things that we're waiting on.
So if I take the 1408 up here, and then I add the 675, 676, the alternates, are they not, I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly where we are. Down below under the alternates, the 675.
So I believe, I had it last week.
So the 245 is gonna be?
I'm trying to think if we need to add, if that adds in there, or if that's already included. I think the add alternates is included. No, it says over there, includes the 675, add alternates.
Okay.
Over to the far right in that note, in that comments column.
Okay.
So that's in there.
So if we take the 1408, and we can take, what, the value engineering off of that?
Yeah, right now, those are numbers that we've identified that we could
Reduce the 1408.
Reduce.
Okay. And then, on the revenue side, there's gonna be a bit that can come from the cafeteria fund.
Well, that's, yeah, the 245,800.
So that would wipe out the kitchen upgrades, is what I'm looking at, because that's the only thing you're able to use it for, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so you could take the 245,800 off of the 250,808, and it'll leave about 13,000 dollars.
13,000.
Well, but the 675 is already up at the top in the 13,000,005.
Right.
So it's in the 1408.
1408, yeah.
So the 248 can come off
Of that number.
Of the 1408, or be added on to the 14,698.
Right, right.
For the revenue.
Correct, to the revenue.
So we're actually, if you add it on there, we're 14,900 and some change.
Right.
So we're not knowing whatever this 1.3 is, we're in good shape.
One second.
Yeah.
Plus, it sounds like there's still some other
Yeah, there's another, there's still, yeah, there's still four or five other sections they're looking at that they feel it would be around $128,000, but we won't know until those contractors get back and give us a hard number.
So we're, we're good with this.
So that's, that's good news.
Yes, I think.
Yeah, I mean, from what we're seeing.
And it starts in November, or is that?
Supposed to be January 1.
Okay.
So is there a timeline for you guys to find back out from that, if you think in like three, four weeks, or?
No, so Greg is just waiting for LCW to contact him with the update. So as those updates come in, Greg just adds them and adds them up.
Gotcha.
So Greg has something he's keeping track of it with, and so just as they find out from the contractors, then he tallies them.
Gotcha, so that could be kind of any day now?
Yeah, I mean, he could have received two this afternoon that I'm not aware of, so.
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say, what about the carryover that says, we won't know until September? Do we know anymore about when that might happen?
Which one? Oh, the 1.3?
Yeah.
So that's again, the audit.
Right.
No, that's not
And Matt said he's been working on closing out this year, so, you know, it's, it's all gonna depend on Matt. No, just kidding.
It's gonna be somewhere between January and March.
When the final figures.
Before we get an audit on it, before we get a book.
No pressure, Matt.
Yeah.
No pressure at all.
No pressure.
He just brings it on the audit, or he's gonna wait?
Right.
So, but yeah, until that audit comes in, you know, there's nothing you can do there. And remember, we still have, what is not listed on this sheet is that 600, what is it, 50,000, that's still sitting in the CIP side?
About that.
Yeah.
Was there a piece of that that we were taking for something else?
So there's, you know, the thing we want to do is take about 300 to do the A&E for EWM.
Okay, so there's
But, but right now
About 350 left.
Right, but if we wanted to say that, hey, to make this a go, you, you know, that we're there, you can push that until the audit is done, or something of that nature, and see where you're at and how that all works out, but, but it's still, it's
Because normally, you're not, you're not playing with this 1.3
Until it's appropriated.
Until next spring.
Right.
After the audit is done sometime April, May is usually when you're talking about, we want to appropriate it for this. But if you take what's left, in there approximately 650, in that million dollars plus the 245, you're just about 900,000, which is going to bring you real close. It's gonna make this something like 14, taking the
About 14,500.
About that 14,500, we take the 1.3 out, but there'll be something there in any event, and then we can see.
And I don't know where they're at still on the cabling with technology, so.
I was gonna ask it, that says
So that's still an estimate, so, you know, if that number's under, you know, 50 to 100,000, whatever that number is, then
We can, yeah, we can bank it.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was a, a real generous estimate. I think they really looked at shooting high on that, so. But yeah, but just, that's, that's where we're at right now with our numbers on value engineering, and of course, the facilities committee will need to look at those and kind of see what they want to do.
So just, just for clarification, the 1.3 is still a, an estimate, so we should put that in red?
It is an estimate.
That it's an estimate, because we don't know for sure what that number's gonna be until January, March, and we, January, two, March. We cannot appropriate that money until after the audit is complete.
Right.
Anyway. And so if I'm doing my math correctly, we're only short maybe $500,000?
At the most, maybe, maybe four.
Okay, yeah, even, even, taking the 1.3 out, yeah, taking the 1.3 out, we're just about 600,000 short right at this very moment.
Right, but that's not including the 600,000 that's in the CIP that we currently have on hand?
No, because I took 300,000 out for A&E for EWM, so that leaves about 300, and that does not, 375, and that doesn't include the 375. So we could add the 375 if we, if we need it, and still be maybe a couple hundred thousand on short.
And those numbers could come in, and you have 128,000 if possibly
We'll cross our fingers that we can, yeah, keep whittling this baby down.
But those were just the numbers they gave me today.
Questions there? I think that, I mean, that's definitely the direction I think we all want to be heading in, so.
That's great, yeah.
I certainly appreciate all the work that the building committee has done, and everything that our staff has done to continue to be
Just one, sorry.
With that.
Sorry, the way they
That's all right.
No, I just drew my mind.
It's all right.
So, all right. Rather than your sharing agreement.
Thank you.
All right, so revenue sharing, and this is 912.
Are there two sheets?
Yeah, there's two sheets. It's, I didn't print them all off on one sheet. Just add the, the second one back on the, on the end of the other one.
Gotcha.
And again, this is what we talked about, this document that I, I looked at and put together, and said I would send to everybody, and I sent it, so I hope everybody's had a chance to
Yep.
To look over it.
So the only, Matt says he's gonna look at it, it's more, the only real thing that I saw is I think the lodging number that should be deducted is higher, because it's three, it's 3%. It's two-thirds rather of our total, it's 3 cents out of 5. So if we get 100,000, then 60,000 goes to tourism.
That's true.
So I think it's more than that, which is actually gonna raise the percentage.
So is that what you're talking about, is on the pilot or the lodging?
Lodging.
Lodging.
So the lodging actually comes from the ACF, or it doesn't come from the pilot? It is, it's a, it's like a couple hundred thousand dollars, so it doesn't make a huge difference anyway, but.
See, the, the number that's here looks like it's what's in the pilot agreement. It's, there's a 3,000, 4,000 number in the pilot agreement because they get 5% of the lodging out on the corridor. And I think that's what that is, whereas I think the 60% is gonna be more, well, it's gonna be 60% of 300,000, so it's gonna be roughly 180. So that will move the needle higher, is what it'll do. If it's 47%, then that's what it is.
Can you explain what you are discussing, please?
So, we get approximately 300,000 for motel tax a year.
Right, correct, from lodging.
From lodging.
We, we increased that from the minimum, which is 2% to 5%, based on the agreement with the Virginia Assembly, that we would give a percentage, that additional 3% back to schools.
3, 3 cents.
3 cents per
So it's 60, 60%.
Okay.
And that goes to tourism.
Tourism, right.
That goes to Discover, Royal, and any other tourism thing we do.
Other initiatives, right.
Then the pilot agreement has 5% of the revenue up there, up on the corridor, and 30% of the meals revenue up there.
Okay.
And the meals are up here shown in the pilot payment. And then this little 4,000, 2,700, et cetera, down here, that's the 5% of the revenue from up there that goes to the town. So there's gonna be another 180 that is added on here as a deduction.
Okay.
And if I take 180 and add it on here, it's gonna make this number lower, the 65,581.
Right, lower, not higher.
And when it's lower, therefore, the percentage that goes to schools will be higher.
Yes, I understand.
So we're maybe looking at like 47% instead of 45, but Matt's playing with the numbers to figure out exactly what they should be. And it, we can shorten it. The question was, you don't want a two-year delay. So we were talking that this year, today, we would use the 2021 audit as an estimate, but in March, when the 2022 audit is complete, that would become a revision, and it usually will be slightly higher. Usually each year, that's gonna be the final audit, the next audit rather, is gonna be slightly higher. So that would then mean that instead of calculating the next budget on 2021, we would be able to do it on 2022. But we wouldn't have that number till spring.
Okay.
So we calculate fiscal '24 based on the audited results of fiscal '22. We'd still have a two-year
But then we would move when we get '23.
But you won't get '23 till halfway through the '24 fiscal year.
Right. So it would be '23 for '25.
Right, yeah, right. So that's on, that's on that two-year.
Two years.
Yeah, and so that's why when you look at this sheet
It's like a spinning top.
So I'll run through, I'll run through kind of how I
Yes, please let us know.
How I calculate this.
Thank you.
And it, and it looks like my numbers are kind of, I had it all highlighted, but I guess when I printed it out here, it kind of put them all in the same color. So what this percentage that you're looking at here, because I had them nice and colored, and
Yeah, they were different groups.
Yes, and they were different groups.
Not all the way across.
So, so let me, let me just start at the bottom. So when you see that 2%, and that's what they're talking about, that cycle.
The percentage on a two-year cycle.
Yeah. So if you look at, right now, we're in '22.
Okay.
Right? So if you look at that bottom number, where it says 44.45%, you have to go back to the previous audit, two years back.
Right.
So you have to look at the 1920 audit. So that number
Excuse me.
So what you did, what I did is I took what we were actually appropriated to 27,720, okay, and divided that by that, that dollar amount, which gives you that percentage.
Of 1920.
Mm-hmm.
I got you.
1920.
I've got you.
Because back when we did the 21, 22 budget, we didn't have the 21 audit, because the 21 audit was done this last year.
And you're, and you're estimating in this differential between 42 and .27, and actual is gonna be a negative to the schools, not a positive?
So, and so that blue one up there is taking what the actual was received of the, the total for that year.
Okay.
And so looking at what we actually received versus what the proposal at 42.47% would have been, you can see for those years, yes, 14 all the way through 2021.
Right.
That the 42% is not a, a good number for
Right.
For the schools.
Yep.
Now, when you look at, if you go up one, the previous year audit, that is just looking at the last year's audit. So you go back one year instead of two years.
Okay.
And that's the percentage going back one year versus two years.
In the blue line.
No, that's the, the, on down here towards
Okay.
Just blue, right there.
Okay.
So if you look over there, percent of previous year.
Gotcha.
And then I have percent on a two-year cycle. So the bottom one is, you're going back two years. The one just above that, you go back one year. So that way, you can look at percentages and just see, what is the difference between one year versus a two-year cycle? And then when you look at the blue, that is of the current, or is that of the, let me make sure, I want to make, get this right, because that may be, that blue may be back to the two-year. So let me just run my figures since my, since everything did not turn off like it should have. I just need to do 42% of the 44. Yes, so the blue is going back on a two-year cycle.
Okay, so biennial?
Yes.
All right, and the, and the pink one is the actual?
Is the actual.
The actual, so
That's what we were
So it ranges 45% of the total revenue versus 41% of the total revenue.
Now, if that one, that is of the current year revenue.
Okay.
Because I, I just looked back, I didn't go back, and I can add another line
To say what the previous year
Say what it would have been of the, of the two-year cycle.
I got you, okay. I'm following now.
Yeah, so, so that's how that one was. It was just looking at of the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Since that was what was appropriated from the locality of that year.
And then when we do these, these two-year budgets, we're looking at the second year is always going to be a revision. So that what we do this spring is gonna be '23, '24, and preliminary '24, '25. And then a year from now, we do the final, '24, '25, and the preliminary, '25, '26. So the appropriation would change with each audit. We'd use the latest audit each time.
For that second year.
So it would come in, like, the number that we get in March, we would use for '23, '24, and '24, '25. But then a year from now, we have the new audit, and that's gonna change the number for '24, '25.
Okay, so we take the actual
Yeah.
And apply it to whatever
So it would be the actual each year.
Right.
It should, as, as revenues go up a little bit each year, then the number's gonna go up a little bit each year.
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, because we had brought this to the last meeting, and I know we had, you had talked about looking at the numbers in a different way, so, but you guys didn't have that for us today, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so
And really, I mean, I know Matt's busy, but he's the one that really has to fill, he has everything to put in what that pilot and that lodging is, right?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so really, once we start getting that, then if that's something that, you know, the school board wants to, to discuss and look into, and then start having more conversations about it, just to kind of see what those, those numbers are.
So I feel like, I, I think that, I think we were all in agreement, we can't really have further discussions until we kind of get a set number. So we'll just, you know,
We'll get there.
Wait for you guys to get us that set number, and then we can continue to have those further discussions on that. I feel like that's kind of where we're at with that, part of that. And we're probably gonna have to ask the same questions when we come back and look at it again, because that's a lot of numbers and a lot of different things, so.
I'll go back in and make sure I, I get them highlighted correctly.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
So that
Yeah.
They're color-coded.
Went over it, it's just a lot of numbers. So I mean, is that, is everybody, I feel like that's kind of where we're at with, with revenue sharing?
Did I give you one of those?
You did, I haven't had time to take a look at it.
It's just a thought that came from VACO, that the state has now authorized a referendum to establish a sales tax for school capital projects, which is something just for us to think, did I give you one?
Yeah, this is brand new.
It's brand new, doesn't mean we want to do it. It's just something to think about.
Okay.
It's a way, years ago, Winchester went for a referendum on school capital funding for sales tax, and it passed 67%. Now, the legislature said no, but the voters said yes, and it's based on this same concept, that the voters would much rather pay sales tax and have it shared by everybody who's using the local services than have it on their real estate.
Right.
Gotcha.
So it's just a thought.
And I'm familiar with that from some, Oklahoma, when there were a lot of schools that, that did this, did a local sales tax, sometimes it's a penny, sometimes it's a cent and a half, that was an additional sales tax, that those revenues went straight into the school system. And school systems, large and small, did, did things like that. So I am familiar with this concept.
So what would one cent of sales tax be to the school, for instance?
Well, we would probably be looking at some, maybe half a penny.
Okay.
It's gonna raise about $3 million.
Okay. That's substantial.
Well, it is.
That's what I wanted to know.
And if we were, if we were in the process of a, a new elementary school.
Right.
If we had a big project, I mean, this LFK right now is the only big project we have on the table, but if we had another school or something in the preliminary that's a couple years old, there was this 25 million dollar figure for an elementary school, and it didn't come from anybody here in the school system, didn't come from anybody here at the county, it just was there. And we said, well, what's that? And a new elementary significantly more than that, depending upon the size of it, and it could be funded by something like this. 2.5 million is 6 cents on the property tax. So it's a significant piece that could be funded by sale, if you were building a new school and funding it by sales. If we had funded a big chunk of the 100 million dollar debt with sales tax, and yeah, it's after the fact, but we couldn't do it back then, but if we could, that would, would have reduced the need to raise the real estate to pay the debt circus.
Well, and given that the number one industry in this community is tourism.
Well
It's people visiting you that's paying the bill, so you're not taxing the residents as much.
And as we got our
It's really a good opportunity, it's really a good program when you, when you look at those local, local sales tags
Right.
For, for capital, or, I mean, for this one, it has to be capital, but, but it is a good program, and it does spread it out. And as Dr. Daly mentioned, you know, it's not going straight to the property owners, it is shared with anybody who comes in and purchases something.
Right, it's use, basically, use taxes.
Yep.
I wonder if you can put like a sunset on it, that it
I think there is a sunset clause.
Yes, there would be. When you paid off that project that the voters voted
And you have to
Raise it, then you
Drop it.
Another one you
And then if you do another project, you gotta do a new vote, yeah, I think so.
What is our local sales tax now, Dr. Daly?
Five and a half.
Okay.
When the schools gets a penny, or half a penny?
We get one and an eighth.
One and an eighth, and the county gets a penny direct. And then the rest of it goes to the state.
Okay.
And we get the 1%, and then they added that eighth of a percent
Yeah.
Some time ago.
A whole eighth?
One eighth of a percent.
Eighteen percent.
Yeah.
So is there, I mean
We'll bring this back.
Are they just now still considering this, or looking at this, or?
Well, we're just skimming this, I just got it a little while bit, but skimming this, about eight localities have adopted this, and they are asking, if it was extended throughout the state, would you consider it? And I'm probably gonna say, yes, we would consider it. It doesn't mean the board's gonna do it, doesn't mean they aren't, but it means that they could consider it.
Yeah, I just received it when you
Yeah, we just got it, not within the last hour.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 204. All right.
So that would be considered another option.
So it would have this option, then that option.
Well, this would be for what we
That's operation.
Oh, this is operation.
That's operation.
That's right, thank you.
Yes.
Got it.
That's a good point, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, because if this is, if the way this is written is strictly for capital.
Only for capital.
Then you can't use that for operation.
Yeah, this, this is just, this thing is just for capital.
Yeah, this was, the, this was a result of the study of the commission of, I remember this now, school construction and modernization. I've heard numerous discussions about it, because there's an estimated twenty-four-point-eight-billion-dollar cost to the state to replace the aging school infrastructure. So they're looking for ways to fund that.
All right, um, I guess we're ready to move on to number four?
Yep, so Rob's up on these, and just to make note, um, on these first number, on, on number four here, A, B, and C, yeah, there is no local contribution, these are all state funds, these are all, um, federal funds. So, you know, there is no local contribution.
Okay.
And all three of these were approved at our last board meeting, uh, last Wednesday on the seventh. These are the original letters for your board action that we would normally hand-carry down the hall to you, um, the signed letters. And then here are copies.
To VSCO, to Emily, all right.
Yeah.
So these are letters that just verify.
They should show up on your, on your board agenda at a future meeting.
Okay.
For your consideration to increase our, our appropriations, and in the packet, the, the first three are, or the first letter in there is for all three, A, B, and C, of the additional appropriation requests. I'll just go over them real quickly, and then if you have any questions, of course, let us know. We received a Department of Justice Services, uh, Criminal Justice Services grant in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And that's so that we can make digital maps of each school, and have those available for building administrators, administrators, and, uh, first responders in the case of, uh, an emergency. It's a statewide program, I think the grants are, and we would need to have your approval to receive that thirty-eight thousand five hundred, and then spend it in budget category sixty-four thousand, which is operations and maintenance.
And this is also a requirement that schools have to do this digital mapping. And so they just also made available state grants to help cover the costs.
Which doesn't always happen, does it?
Which does not always happen.
Hence the term unfunded mandates.
Yeah, I love it.
The second request is for twenty thousand dollars in additional Medicaid, um, revenue that we anticipate receiving this year. That would go towards a need we have with, uh, having certified nursing assistants available to help with our special ed students. We've employed these folks as, um, instructional assistants in the past, um, but to get someone with a CNA, and we have students that the needs are quite intensive, and would, um, need, we need to have someone with a CNA, and it's become increasingly difficult to get them at the, uh, just the regular salary of an instructional assistant. They're doing things way beyond medically what an instructional assistant would do. So that is, uh, state Medicaid reimbursements that we would get greater than what we had anticipated back when we proposed our budget. And then the final one is, um, it's the federal Title VI, which is our special ed flow-through money, it's federal money that flows through the state. And each year, we receive sometime in August, an award for that current year we're in. So back in March, when we put our budget together and presented to you, we go on an estimate, but we, we're a little bit conservative, we go on what we had that current year. And, uh, we're gonna get actually a hundred and forty-nine thousand, um, just slightly greater than that, more in that revenue. We would like to have a hundred, uh, thirty-three thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars, um, go into category sixty-one thousand, which is instruction. And that would be for an additional instructional assistant. I, I mentioned some of our special needs students have intensive needs, and there are some cases where we just need some more folks there to support these students, um, during the day at, at school. The remaining hundred and sixteen would go towards both contract, contracted services and special ed, and then also materials and supplies. We're, we're having to supply a lot more things for the students, um, with special needs, as well as we're, we're seeing the cost of those things go up. And then the contracted services, um, anything from vision, um, services to the, the different services we have to. We're just seeing more need there with those students, and of course, as everything else is, those costs are going up, the unit cost for, um, the hourly rates for those. So, we have not increased either of those lines, um, in the budget for many years, and, um, it's just gotten to the point where it's gotten very tight, so, um, as mentioned there, no additional local funding is required for any of these, and, uh, if you will approve these at one of your future meetings, we'll be in good shape to go ahead and, uh, put in place these, uh, these initiatives. And we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
And that's one thing about federal programs, is they always think you use the last year's number.
Right.
And then you don't get your new appropriation until September, October of the next year after school is started. So we still have title programs that we haven't received our final number on.
It was changed.
So.
Yeah.
So any of, uh, these grants, are they going to absorb any outstanding expenses from the earlier budget that you produced?
That we didn't, weren't able to fund, or were able to fund.
Right, the one point two million.
Um, no, because that instructional assistant position is a, is another position. We have a need at one of our schools that, that really has to have that right now, and so that is an additional instructional.
So this is a, a new scope, if you will, this is a new, new position that you did not plan for with the original budget?
Correct. Based on student need, the, the need of a student, students.
And, and same, same with the, um, instruct, instructional supplies and things like that.
Correct.
This is above and beyond what the grant will cover.
Yes.
Yeah, because a lot of the things that we've been having to do is, um, as we, we see that we're falling short, maybe it's in speech, or language, or pathology, and then services like throughout the year over the summer, we have to now contract some of those out. So we're having to actually contract some services to make sure that we have them in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think these are pretty straightforward, just pass-through money.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just.
Flow-through, pass-through. All right, so number five. Request to appropriate the FY twenty twenty-one surplus.
Our school board was busy last week spending money or thinking of ways to spend money, weren't they? This is, and we've talked to you about this for quite a while now, um, the fiscal twenty-one, um, surplus, having that appropriated a million to the capital improvement fund, um, there's four hundred nine thousand nine thirteen, and that's just what's left out after the other two requests would go to that, um, transportation fund that you hold for us. And finally, the two hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred is amount we had agreed some time ago to allow you to retain because it was targeted for, um, raises back in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, which is this budget cycle, that because of the, um, pandemic, we were told by the state, you ought to count on having a reduction, because we don't know where any of this is going. So we held back on that, and it worked out that it probably, we, we felt it was better at that point to give a bonus to employees in March of twenty-one, instead of giving them a raise in March that's only gonna be for like three months of the, the year yet, um.
Is that because they're contractual employees, is that why you do that?
Yes, it does, but they're contracted for so many days, so when you get to the point of.
Where there's really little returns.
Sixty days left in the year, then it's only gonna be a small percentage of the, the annualized amount, um, and.
So it doesn't carry forward to their future employment?
It, it would, and what it would do is it sort of, um, you start out sort of in the hole the next year because you, you have done that, which you done, so, for whatever reason.
This world of contracting.
It's certainly debatable which way is better to do it, and it depends on, you know, individual circumstances, but.
It's confusing.
That's what we did, and because of that, we were asked about that at some of our meetings.
Right.
Um, some time ago, and we had agreed, um, the superintendent agreed, to give that money back to the county, not to ask for it back in the surplus, because it wasn't used specifically for what it was earmarked to be used for back in, the beginning of twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, is that accurate?
That is correct, and remember, this is just a recap, we talked about this, uh, a couple weeks, yeah, I can't remember when it was.
And when we're talking about the million dollars in the four oh nine, nine thirteen, we're talking about those stuff, the, the accounts that we hold on your behalf, correct? Okay, just making sure. All right. So we have a CIP right now that has, how much in it?
Six hundred and fifty-something, approximately.
All right, and we have a bus fund with how much in it currently?
Ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, ninety-five, I think.
Okay.
Approximately, we, we just bought the group of buses, and there's a little bit less than a hundred thousand in there.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So we ought to be able to get, when you put this with what's already in there for the buses, should be able to get four buses?
Right.
Now, the way that this was, was written, so just to, to let you know, as far as when you look at the, the, the motion. It was that the four oh nine go to the transportation fund held by the county, because we don't have a transportation fund. But the other go to the school capital improvement fund held by the school.
Okay, well, is there a reason why that's written that way?
Hypographical error by the school when they did that.
All right, no worries, as long as we know where it's gonna sit, because what I would like to see moving forward is maybe a, a report in our quarterly meetings of how much is in those funds. That way, we have, uh, an accounting and a tracking of what's being spent, and what we've appropriated. I think it's important for everybody to know what we've got in the pot waiting for you.
The two point two that we put, that the board approved for LFK in June, that went to schools' capital.
Okay.
Rather than county schools' capital.
Okay.
Okay.
So we've got two different capital funds?
Because we have the one fund that is with the board.
Right, that we hold.
That we hold.
We just appropriate it as needed.
We appropriate it when they have a project, when they have the buses, they came in, when they had the roof. That's right.
So we're not gonna use anything else.
No, can't, no, without, well, the board.
Right.
The board can do whatever it wants, if it wants to re-appropriate money, it can do that.
Right.
But it's appropriated in our books for these projects.
Okay.
And that's where it stays until the board moves it.
I'm trying to educate the community about how we do this, I understand, but I wanna be sure.
So that everybody, it sits there, and if we decide what we do with this two sixty-nine, uh, we can A, put it, add it into the, uh, county schools' capital project.
Right.
We can put it into, uh, our favorite new fire station disaster down the road.
Right.
Or we can put it into general fund reserve, so we can do any of those three, and the board will need to determine what he wants to do.
Okay.
But yes, we can make a quarterly report, or monthly rule on the status whenever we move money out of these recounts, that you know it, and everybody sees it.
Just so we have whatever remaining balances reported, I think that's important, just so we know.
I think so, we can include that.
Okay.
In your reports. Okay.
And what's this, oh, this is the.
This is easier.
Yeah, that was.
If anybody walks in here like they're looking for drug court, we're across the hall.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any questions there?
Nope. It's straightforward enough that.
The, uh, what are we on, the appropriating of the?
And this was the second time that we've talked about that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is in response to, to your appropriating the five million seven fourteen five forty-one for some specific purposes. It was appropriated to, um, just at the time, the instruction line, and then what this is doing is asking to put it down into the lines that are appropriate to accomplish the items that you appropriated that total amount for.
And so what you have listed here is the, um, the public content, is the explanation and summary, and the full funding of the five percent salary increase.
Mm-hmm.
A thousand dollar bonus for staff in December, that's every staff member, and that's a thousand dollar, um.
Every full time, that's a thousand gross.
Okay, just making sure, just trying to get, yeah, educate our community.
Pay will be less.
Yep, uh, funding for all the extra, extracurricular, provide the remaining supplements that we didn't withhold, restore the three furlough days, and fill all existing teacher vacancies, okay. And this, we'll vote on this at a future meeting, I'm assuming that, and this is just for the, for it to go into the right categories.
Categories, no more, not changing the bottom line or anything.
Right, just the categorical.
Shifting it down from instruction to where, where it actually falls.
Yeah, where it needs to be.
Okay. I see that, perfect, okay, excellent.
And I want to just kinda make a quick comment on that too, because I know it does say on here, provide the remaining supplements not withheld, there are still supplements that have not been able to be filled. This was not, we were able to do quite a lot of them, but there were still some supplements that, um, we have had to hold off on, so this isn't quite all of them, um, it's, I think there's five, four or five sets of groups of supplements, um, that still have, I mean, it just, it's, it's a tough thing that we've had to sit down to take a look at.
Okay.
It, it's been, you know, it's a very, um, that's a, a, you know, we, we take that with, uh, great passion looking at that, but there were still some that haven't been able to be filled.
Believe me, we understand.
So.
We have a courthouse that is being remediated for mold, and we, and we have an HVAC system that isn't working in this building. We understand tough decisions, it's hard.
You know, so, you know, obviously, it is our goal, hopefully, to get that one point two, you know, completed so that we can certainly make all that happen that was originally in that, um, that budget, but I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there too, so, but it got us a good, good fit. All right, the number seven, we're gonna like, uh, not, we, uh, we need to talk about that, I think that kinda, uh, went on here.
Number six.
Number six.
Oh, number.
Yeah, number six.
Current year position.
Number six, I have two different things, there's a difference, he added that one, so number six, sorry, it's number, number six on one, number seven on the other. So the current year position needs due to class sizes, um, we need to discuss that first.
Okay.
So that's something we're just gonna, you can scratch off right now, I think at this point.
Who put that on here?
What do you mean?
That was.
It was ours.
You did, okay.
Oh, was it?
No, ours is number of teaching and non-teaching vacancies.
Yeah, sorry, when I said number, I see on the other one, it says number seven. So yeah, so number six we'll go off.
So number six we're holding off, number seven, um, we have one assistant, thirteen and a half teachers, and one maintenance.
One, say that one more time, one assistant.
Thirteen and a half teachers.
And one maintenance.
And one maintenance.
You've whittled that down pretty well, I have to say.
Yeah, no, they've, they've done a good job, and actually, I mean, we're continuing, we've got people identified for some of these positions.
Okay.
And we'll, we keep whittling down at those every day, so, um, you know, if you wanna know kinda where they are, I can let you know that.
Okay, that'd be great.
We have a curriculum coordinator and a spec, special education coordinator, we have a fourth grade teacher at E. Wilson Morrison, we have the cafeteria assistant at Hilda, we have a pathways connection teacher at L. We have a pathways connection teacher at LFK. A seventh grade math teacher at Skyline Middle School. A facts and agriculture teacher at Warren County Middle School. Two math teachers at Skyline High School. An ELL, English teacher, sped teacher. Then we have the part-time CNA. And then from non-traditional, we have a middle school teacher and our maintenance is a maintenance journeyman, HVAC.
We can relate to that one.
So.
So you only have three math openings?
Well.
One at.
Well, we had.
Seventh and two at the high school.
Well, we had four, but we moved one to give an ELL teacher. Because the school had it figured out.
Okay.
So we repurposed one of those math features for an ELL teacher. But that math teacher will have to come back.
Okay. So in terms of budget, how much, but what would be the total of unused budget for these? Do you have that number?
A new budget?
No, no. Okay, so these vacancies here, what does that equate to as far as budget dollars? Unexpended dollars?
I mean, that is a question for Rob, but I can tell you it would probably have to.
About three quarters of a million dollars.
Three quarters.
You would have to go back and look at, one, was it a position that was budgeted for, that had somebody in it last year? What was that dollar amount? If it was a position that, you know, was high on the scale? Was it somebody that was new? Also, when it comes in, was this a, one of those positions that we haven't been able to fill for a couple of years? That was asked for two or three budgets ago? And, and was it set at five years, 10 years, 15 years? So you'd have to go back and look at each of those, those areas to see.
The criteria, right?
Just off the top of my head, just averaging numbers.
Yeah, just average, yeah.
Eight fifty to nine hundred thousand maybe.
Eight fifty to nine, okay.
With benefits, you know, the total.
What you can typically do, and I think, I don't, I don't know what number Rob uses, but I'll use either about 75,000 total cost. Maybe 70 to 75,000 total cost. I think that gets us a good.
And that's all burden costs, that's with the other benefits.
That would be total cost, yes, that's total cost.
Would that be for the full year?
That'd be for the full year.
So if we hire them, then it will be much smaller.
And then, of course, assistants would be.
Assistants are, are different, so those are for teachers. So.
Well, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, whatever was just reported, that's all.
I understand, I got it, all right.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Schedule next committee meeting. Unless we have any other thoughts, questions or anything?
I have a, a question and we don't have the answer right here, you know, but I saw that there's a clerk's report that is published once, once the month of your monthly expenditures. And I noticed in the, in the report, you do show the individual line item that it's charged to that's coming from the budget line item report that was given to us. Is there any way that you can merge those two? You know, so what I'm looking at is.
In that report?
Or, or any report, you don't have to, you know.
Well, we do a report that merges those, it's a sort of an internal report, but it's, you know, public information for anyone. That, that does that each month, it tracks what our original appropriation is, what our current appropriation is. And then how much has been spent that month, then year-to-date, how much of that's encumbered if we have outstanding purchase orders? And then what the available balance is, and then the percentage that's been spent year-to-date.
So it is year-to-date?
Yeah. Well, but it does show each month then. It shows the month and year-to-date.
By your categories?
It's by our cost centers, the way we sort it, which is the schools, each school listed.
Oh, that's even better.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you have something like that, I, I like to, you know, just take a look at it, you know? I like looking at performance factors.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's all I have.
I got nothing. I mean, we've covered everything that, yeah.
So I guess, want to look at our calendar to see the next one? I mean, you know, the only, the only thing I would like to just, you've heard me plug it 150,000 times, it's just, I really want to, I hope we can get to the, looking at that 1.2 sooner than later, so that.
And the only thing, I know one of the concerns is, is LFK. And what will actually be the reality of that versus the speculation? Because we never know. There's uncertainties there. I know that we have that. We also have E. Wilson Morrison that we want to, if there's any way that we can make that a priority at some point for those kids. That's another consideration.
And I totally understand that from, from our perspective, it just feels like we're holding part of the operations budget for capital instead of the operations to which it was originally appropriated for. If that makes sense? Because we originally approved it as operations for us and some of it is now being withheld. And I understand, but for capital, so it really puts us in a predicament, obviously. You know, when we have to talk to our staff who are like, well, how come I didn't get that supplement yet? Well, you know.
So what are the five supplements and how much are they worth?
It's, I mean, I don't, I don't have that paper with me.
I know you gave that to us at one, I probably got it wrong.
Probably in one of your five.
It's in one of those, you know, but, and, and those are just the conversations that we're having. And so I tell them, I said, look, you know, we are, we are continuing to work, we're trying to, because it, you know. And again, I think we've all learned a lot moving forward so that we're not in this same predicament come next September of 2023, but.
And yeah, and one of our concerns going forward as well in the future is the sustainability of some of these decisions that have been made that we've had to make during COVID. What's going to happen, you know, with future funding, the biennial budget? There's so many things, so it may not be, the 1.2 may not be used for capital, may be used for future operations. But it's yours, it's appropriated to you, we've appropriated to schools. So one way or another, it doesn't, I mean, it's not like we're spending on a fire department.
Well, we don't have it yet, we don't have that 1.2 yet. And I get that, but you know, I get that, it would be going to schools, but you know, but we don't have it yet for the operating, so.
Right.
And we'll just continue to push forward.
Well, I mean, that's one of the, the purposes of us reevaluating your budget every quarter to look at your performance. You know, and if there's something there that's a risk that's unrealized or, you know, then that's when we'll open up for discussion.
Well, again, I'm just going to reiterate, I hope that come next September of 2024, we're not sitting here still trying to get a finalized budget that should have been done back in March.
Well, and I want to.
And I, and I think you guys want that to be too.
Absolutely.
We don't want it to go from March to September, but that's the realization of where we're at.
But one of the issues was the general assembly didn't even approve a budget till the end of July or June.
Right, and that was a huge factor, you're absolutely correct, absolutely.
They can't take action until they do.
Yeah, a lot of it had nothing to do with the board of supervisors, it had to do with the GA.
There, there's a lot of fingers in there that we had to really wait and really.
Yeah, this has been a peculiar environment from 20 to now, period. We're all learning, these are new, you know, this is territory that none of us have had to, to go through.
I agree.
For this, at this point. And so we're all trying to figure out, how do we navigate this budget cycle? So I'm hoping that at the end, it's all gonna, we're all gonna go, wow, glad we did this. Because it'll be a good learning experience and, and we'll understand where we really have needs and where we can be a little better perhaps at planning for the future. That's our biggest thing, is that we want to plan for you, for the future needs of this county school systems. And not get caught in a situation where we can't fund something. So.
Well, and, and, you know, and that's the thing that we are doing is we, you know, we're planning on where we need to go.
And I think that's great. I think the conversations we're having are very insightful to the community as well. We're educating them as to what is it that we really have needs for? And I was excited to see this potential general assembly approval or potential, because I think you have to apply. I don't think it's a guarantee. I think that they're asking if you want to get a special taxing authority for the school system to raise. And I think then that would be your decision, right? It would be their vote, not ours. Isn't it? If it's special taxing authority for the school.
It probably will require both.
Both. That's, that's, you're probably right. Yeah, I'd have to research that a little further to see. Yep.
All right, so what are we thinking about for the next one? We've been kind of doing, like I guess, once a month?
Yep. And I think that's good, as long as we have content, I'm good with once a month.
So, where does that put us?
Will that give you time, one month, to help us with this?
Yes, I can have the revenue.
Revenue sharing, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I think that would be a big piece, I think at this point.
Yep, that conversation as to whether or not that makes sense.
And Mondays, I think, was that better for everybody, I think, than Thursdays?
It is for me, it is for me, yes.
So. Anybody want to, oh, I cannot do the 17th, unfortunately.
That's good, neither can I.
Okay, good.
Well, I was, you know, I usually don't say anything when we schedule our meetings because I'm just, you know, whatever meets everybody's schedule, I'll just, I'll just be there. But I did have a standing meeting that I did have to reschedule with the Warren County Education Association. I had them scheduled every second Monday. And so I had to actually reschedule today's meeting.
Okay.
And it's typically at four o'clock.
Okay.
So that was a, a standing meeting that I've, I've been meeting with them for the last two years, so this is going on three years.
At that time?
So what about like the fourth Monday?
Yeah, the fourth.
October has five Mondays, but the 30th is Halloween.
Yeah, that, that isn't even a good idea for it. Yeah.
Would the fourth Monday work for every, like for October, the 24th, would that work?
Actually, there are very few meetings on the fourth Monday, so yes.
October 24th?
At four o'clock?
I'm, I'm good with that as well.
Yep.
Oh, I'm going to have to reschedule Jay's meeting again, but that's okay.
Budget meeting at four, gotcha.
Yep. All righty.
I'm going to meet down at the school side this time again.
Yeah.
You're going to have coffee?
Just rotate them.
Yeah, we're going to get you guys a coffee.
I finished this one.
We have a caring machine, just turn your caring.
I'm about to bring my cake up.
Bring your cake cups. We have machines out there.
Can I ask one more question? Ms. Flo, you have been so gracious as to send us all out notes. Will you, are you doing that for today?
Sure.
What we'd like to do, because one of the, the items that surfaced in, in our, in our collaboration meeting was communication. And so what we'd like to do is pass that on to our board. So if you could send it to us and we're going to send it to our board members.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
That way everybody knows what we discussed and, yeah. And your notes are fabulous, by the way.
Yes, she does a great job.
So thank you, yeah.
All righty, I think that's it.
Thanks, everybody.
Good.